Bring the guy with a gun to take care of it. Good evening, I'd like to call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for the City of Calistoga. It is Tuesday, May 15, 2018, at 6:02 PM. City Clerk Flampson, has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Lopez Ortega. Here. Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Councilmember Kraus.
Here.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
Here.
Mayor Canning. Please all stand and join with a salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you all and welcome. If you've not already done so, please silence your cellphones. We did hold a closed session on May 1, and the topic of the closed session was an employee performance review, and that would be for the city manager Dylan Feek. There is nothing to report, but he's here, so that's generally a good sign. Moving on to oral communication on consent items or non-agendized items. This time is set aside to receive comments from the public regarding matters on the consent calendar or matters of municipal concern that are not on the agenda pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, also known as the Brown Act. However, the council cannot consider any issues or take action on any request during this comment period. Speakers are encouraged to limit their comments to a maximum of three minutes so that all speakers have an opportunity to address the city council. They do not have any speaker cards if anyone is interested in addressing the council. Please approach the lectern, and should you so choose, share with us your name and your address, but you are not required to do so.
Thank you, City Council and Mayor. I avoided sitting in a chair because that would take another five minutes for me to get to here. My name is Shelby Valentine. I reside at 2771 Foothill Boulevard. And I've wanted to speak on the subject of workforce housing. I am a proponent of workforce housing, and as I feel that most of responsible citizens that live in the Bay Area, and in particular in Northern California, are also in favor of workforce housing. I had some research and data and anecdotes from quite a few organizations that are here specifically in our North Bay Area. And I want to start with one point. I'll end on this one point, and then I have a question. There is a term called brownfield land, grayfield land, and greenfield land. It's an Anglo-American term, describes land previously used for industrial or commercial purposes, in the case of brownfield. And in the case of grayfield, it's economically obsolete, outdated, failing, or underused real estate as an asset or land. And then there's this greenfield land designation. This is coming from the 2018 State of the North Bay, northbayleadership.org, and it advocates for accessory and junior accessory units in existing neighborhoods. They go on to say, "Let's support new housing development that meets community standards." And under greenfield land, it says, as a direct quote, "Rather than build upon greenfield land, a developer should choose to redevelop brownfield or grayfield areas that have been developed but left abandoned or unused."
You've got 30 seconds, Shelby.
Well, you're going to have to hold on. I should try to go to three minutes, but I'm not going to make it. The ad for the Yellow Rose property states at the end, quote, "City of Calistoga has expressed an interest in upzoning to R1PD." And I'd like, the question is, who here told or acted as the city to fundamentally lead a potential buyer and the realtor to believe that you would change the zoning? Because it kind of puts the developer or the buyer at a great disadvantage to be misled that way. You have all of these resources that tell you-
You're at three and a half minutes, I'll give you 30 more seconds.
You have all these resources that give you guidance and clear guidelines, the workforce housing for the Bay Area Council, the Urban Land Institute in San Francisco, the area of association Bay Area governments, and, most importantly, your RHRA. That's not the right one. I'm remembering when I talked to Jim, I couldn't quite remember those letters. But anyway, it's your regional group that tells you that we really want to meet our goals for housing. This is not a new issue. This has been around since 1945. It's all over the United States. We have to do our best to comply, but we have to remember that we're doing this in conjunction with other responsibilities for green gases, green gas footprint, and for prevention of urban sprawl, and also providing transportation hubs.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Shelby.
How much time did I take?
We won't worry about that. 4:42.
All right.
Anyone else wishing to address the council on a non-agendized item or a consent calendar item? All right, I will close oral communication, and I will-
Got one.
I'm sorry, yes, sir. Share with us your name and your address, should you so choose, and please stick to three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilors. My name is Frederick Lancaster, and I reside for a good bit of the year at 216 High Street. And I wanted to address the concerns that I have, I think along with many of us, about the direction of our county and the direction of our town, having overbuilt, several years ago, we decided by referenda to overbuild at Silverado Trail and take out 8,000 trees for another development, which I and many of us consider to be, when one development begins at $3.5 million per house, for the half of 1 percent. And the effect that that development is having here on the current and the future of our town, with the carrying capacity of water, tax base, congestion, continual degradation of our soil, high cancer rates, cancer survivor, maybe not necessarily just because of the wine that I've drank from Napa County. Maybe I did have my colonoscopy a little bit too late. So I have strong concern with the direction of our town, with how we treated the water increase. Thank you for sending it at Thanksgiving. I have concern over what we do with the county property that we have at our disposal here. Let's open it up to a more creative process than looking at the bottom line, which of course does not include the negative aspects of the bottom line, does it? The bottom line does not include the health of the soil, the loss of water, congestion, what we spray in the vineyards. What gives me some hope is that the City Council of St. Helena has endorsed Measure C, according to the St. Helena Star, thank you, but the Tribune does not report that my city council has taken such a positive, future-forward view. We cannot, I feel, hold just merely the economic bottom line for the benefit of major developers when we have situations, as Shelby has addressed, about housing, the lack of education for our high school students in mathematics, the conditions of our climate.
You've got three minutes, Frederick.
That's three minutes, is it?
Yeah.
Well, thank you very much, I feel finished.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else interested in addressing the council? All right, I will close oral communication, and I will entertain a motion to adopt this evening's agenda as presented, and I'll say modification is requested.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Vice Mayor Dunsford, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, carries unanimously. Council requests and ideas for discussion. Councilmember Lopez Ortega.
I have not yet today.
All right, Councilmember Barnes.
One thing, you're all aware Memorial Day is coming up, and as usual, Calistoga American Legion Post 231 will be hosting two events on Memorial Day. The first one at 9:30 up at Pioneer Cemetery. We will do our annual Civil War dedication to the 22 or 23 Civil War vets buried up there. And as a parenthesis, thank you, Mike, for getting a new fence up there. We really appreciate it. And then at 11 o'clock, we will have our other ceremony down at the Veterans Memorial at Logview Park, music speeches, comments, and this year we are initiating 25 new veterans into our Veterans Memorial, and we will read their names into the roll. And finally, this coming Saturday, the 18th, I guess, 19th, we will be laying those 25 new bricks out at the memorial, so anybody out there that would like to come and watch us put the bricks down, or even maybe lend us a hand, we're getting older and slower, and some young help wouldn't be adverse. So, thank you.
You're not older and slower, you're just more deliberate in your actions.
Okay, that'll work.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes, I know we have Mike Kern here someplace, don't we? Yep, he's hiding in the back there for now, but I've been noticing a lot of new white marks put in the street, and I've noticed a street sweeper going around from out of town, and I guess that means we're getting ready to finish up the project that the fires and weather interrupted last fall. Is that going to happen the next week or so, Mike? Mike said yes.
Starts tomorrow, doesn't it, Mike?
Yeah.
Well, I've been seeing saw horses.
Director Kern, welcome.
Thank you. So they're going to be doing the repairs to the areas that kind of shedded this week, so I believe it's Thursday and Friday, or Wednesday and Thursday, and then they will come back on Monday in earnest to put down the final slurry coat, and that will take through the better part of the week, hopefully wrapped up by Thursday. And we have to let that cure for about two weeks before they can do the permanent striping, because we don't want it to bleed through, and then you have a good chance to set up. We are initiating a change order with the contractor, but we will also do similar treatment on petrified forest from Foothill to the city limits as you're heading out of town. And we'll also do Cedar Street from petrified forest basically to the end of the road at Rancho D. So it'll be on the cedar portion of the road, the access road into Rancho D, but not in Rancho D proper. So hopefully we'll get that all done within the next couple of weeks, and just looking forward to it being done.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Kraus, anything else?
Nothing else.
Vice Mayor Dunsford.
Nothing.
All right. Mike, while you're up, thank you to you and your team for the new restrooms here. I know it was a more complicated project than we'd anticipated, so thanks for that. Dylan and I did receive a compliment from the mayor of St. Helena about our fine public restrooms that he was able to use this past weekend. So, it's good enough for, never mind. Just a quick update on the JPA, Napa County Fairgrounds, discussions between the county and the city. As the public is aware, the city and the county have been in discussions, not only on the JPA, but a potential land transaction. At this stage, we will consider that ongoing, but on June 5, at this meeting, we will have an agendized item to update the public on where that all is by that point in time. And that's it. City managers report, please.
The only thing I have this evening, Mayor, is an item which Steve Campbell did not want to provide, he's kind of camera shy. But on May 4, we sent two of our firefighters, Blake McCormick and Jeremy Campbell, to a Bay Area firefighters conference. It was held in Pleasanton, and essentially it was a lot of training for 25 different agencies. And one of the particular classes, which was a forcible entry class, there was a lot of instruction on different techniques, and then the second half of the day was really about team evaluations and a little bit of a challenge, if you will. Blake and Jeremy took first place out of a group of 25 fire agencies across the county. So if you ever need someone to help you break into a home, call your local Calistoga Fire Department. Great job, Blake and Jeremy.
Well, during the firestorm of October, I did witness our fire department breaking into the offices at Calistoga Spa Hot Springs, so I can attest, they're very efficient, with very little damage done. With permission, they were allowed to break in. Proclamations, presentations, and awards. First off, we have Public Works Week, May 20 to the 26, 2018, with a proclamation. Is this going to be you, Derek, or are you going to put Mike up to this? City of Calistoga proclamation, Public Works Week, May 20 to 26, 2018. Whereas public work services provided in our communities are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public works systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and highways, public buildings, and solid waste collection. And whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this city depends on these facilities and services, and whereas the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of the public works officials, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, and whereas the year of 2018 marks the 58th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, now therefore I, Chris Canning, Mayor of the City of Calistoga, do hereby proclaim the week of May 20 to the 26th as Public Works Week in Calistoga, encourage all citizens to join me in this worthy observation. Derek and Mike, thank you very much. If you have any words to say, otherwise, what we're going to have happen this evening is we're going to have the vice mayor present you with a proclamation, and the newspaper is going to take a picture of that and put that in the paper. If you read your Tribune last week, you'll know why. Take off your glasses, Mike. Thank you, guys, very much, and please thank your department for us. My Safe California presentation. Come on up. All right, this is going to be a presentation, folks. Please share with us your name, the organization you represent, and you are off and running.
Terrific. Kathy, should we start with the trailer? It is. Yeah, let's start with the trailer. Okay, the screen's not on, though.
Yeah, turn the lights out.
Oh, yeah, that looks familiar.
We're on to Day 4, 17. Thank you, Your Honor. Your Honor, this case is an absolute tragedy. It's a tragedy that happened at the hands of this defendant, but it's also a tragedy This defendant is not even old enough to drink, she is 17 years old. However, she made the choice to do so. She then made the decision to get in her vehicle and drive with a blood alcohol level Lives were changed, and they were changed for forever.
My name is Cameron Barrett, and I am a director for My Safe California, which is a California public charity, 501(c)(3), and I'm joined by my colleague, David Zvoboda, who is also a member of My Safe California and was part of the film crew that made the film you just saw, a short trailer of. I know that most of you in this room know about the Every 15 Minutes Initiative, and I hope that you know that you and everyone here in Calistoga set the bar when it comes to that particular initiative. There are a lot of communities that do it all over the country. I've seen a lot of them, I've seen a lot of films made from Every 15 Minutes Initiatives. I can assure you that none of them do it the way that the City of Calistoga does it. And so we were really, really fortunate to be asked to make the film this past year in 2017. We were even more fortunate to have been able to make the film because of the California Highway Patrol, who gifted us with a grant that partially funded the making of that film. And I'm so pleased that Mark could make it. Mark Rentsberger is here, forgive me, Mark, I always mix up your name. And I'd love him to join us, if he can. Every element of the city came together to make this film, and so that's why I'm going to call up everybody who's standing back there, from Chief Salea and his incredible members with the Calistoga Police Department, come on up, and of course, Chief Campbell, who's ducked out because he's camera shy, and all of the members of Calistoga Fire, come on up. Sam, Sam, Sam was a huge part, she wasn't just a huge part of the planning process, but Sam was also on camera, and that's not an easy thing to do. And who am I forgetting?
Tim Martin, what are you doing back there? But you know, it was a group effort, you were part of it.
Everybody's a part of this, and that's the most extraordinary thing I think about Calistoga. So, yeah, come on up, come on up. Stand behind, that's what we're going for, is we're going for the big photo op. Everybody's standing behind us right here. So I hope everybody knows that the idea behind the Every 15 Minutes Initiative is to stop drunk driving in high school students and to make them understand the consequences, lifelong consequences of either driving while drunk or getting into a car with somebody who has been drinking. And that's what the film was about. It was shot in two days, and it was edited overnight, and that was a really long night. And then we showed it to the assembly the next day, and there were not, there wasn't a lot of dry eyes in the house. I don't think there were a lot of dry eyes in the house, a lot of folks pretty moved by it. And that has to do with how extraordinary Calistoga High School faculty, staff, parents, and students were. They completely backed this and got into it, so there were, I hope, a lot of lives changed, and a lot of good decisions made and bad ones not made. And that, of course, is the only reason why the film was put together, and the entire initiative came true. So, the neat thing about the film is, we put it into a couple of film festivals, and this little bugger, 16 minutes and 55 seconds of film, just keeps winning. So we have some presents for you guys.
Wow.
Yeah. Okay. So, we put it in for a couple of Best Shorts Film Festival, it won two. It won for women filmmakers, and then it won an Award of Recognition Film for Social Change, and we would like our esteemed mayor, who led the charge for Every 15 Minutes, to come up and accept the Best Shorts winner, Award of Recognition Film for Social Change, Every 15 Minutes, Calistoga, 2017. And then, oh, by the way, we found out, we found out last week it won a fifth award. Yeah, but we didn't have time to get a statue yet. It won an Award of Distinction with the Communicators Award for Social Responsibility. And then we put it in for a couple of awards for Indie Fest, which is a film festival. It won an Award of Merit for Women Filmmakers, and an Award of Merit for Raising Awareness, and so I would like Mark, there he is, because Mark gave us the money, so Mark, to accept the Indie Fest winner, Award of Merit, Raising Awareness, Every 15 Minutes, Calistoga, 2017. So I spent the last week at a Community Risk Reduction Policy Approach course at the National Fire Academy, and I hope every single one of you, your ears burned the entire week, because Calistoga, I constantly brought up, as an example of a community that understands community risk reduction as a whole. It is a holistic approach, you can't just put in a smoke alarm or fund your fire department and police department without supporting them socially and supporting them with your community, and that's really what's working. I talked all about you guys. And finally, I really hope that our next film project is going to be just as successful. We're doing oral histories with children in Calistoga and Lake County who were evacuated last year ahead of the wildfires, and we're having kids teach kids on how to evacuate, what to pack, and how to stay calm. So, thank you so much. Thank you so much for making this possible for us.
We're not done with this group yet. I'm here today on behalf of Senator Dodd and Congressman Mike Thompson. They are, they were very impressed by the work the organization did, and I have some very special certificates here for you today. We have one for My Safe California from Congressman Thompson in recognition and sincere appreciation of the extraordinary work of My Safe California on promoting safety and the prevention of driving under the influence. Congratulations on the well-deserved awards.
Thank you so much.
Cameron, our Senate award is very similar, so I won't read it, but we did name you on our certificate here, so this one is especially for you. There you go. Sorry. We have a recognition for the Calistoga Unified School District on behalf of Congressman Thompson and Senator Dodd. We have named Superintendent Aaron Hagberg as our awardee for the Calistoga Unified School District. Is she here?
She's not.
Okay.
Another function.
And we have named Mayor Chris Canning of the City of Calistoga for the Senate and Congressional Award.
Thank you.
He's absent, too.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you. I was there for the day that they filmed this reenactment, and it's very moving. It's very intense. The level of reality, as a result of the participation of the police and the fire, ambulances, helicopters, et cetera, was amazing. I have not seen, but will see this full video, but I have been kept informed of how well the video's doing. But in addition to winning awards, more importantly is that it's impacting lives. And I know it's a very moving experience here in Calistoga, and thank you to Highway Patrol for being a funder of it as well. But we also had—the Calistoga Rotary was a significant funder, and volunteer base, American Legion, Duffy's, I believe, the firefighters and police associations as well. So a lot goes into this, and thank you for your guys' participation and support as well through My Safe California.
Chris?
Please.
There's someone in this room that also needs a special thank you for this. This was the fifth time we have put this program on. We do it every three years, so that's 15 years. 15 years ago, my good friend Gary Kraus, Councilman Kraus, brought this program to Calistoga. He was the fire chief at the time, and he saw it somewhere—I can't remember where. And Gary is also a member of Rotary, and he brought it to the Rotary Club and said, "This is something that Calistoga should do." So the Calistoga Rotary Club, in conjunction with Gary, put it on the first year, along with the school district and all the firefighters and police officers and all the rest of the people that were mentioned here. And if it hadn't been for Gary, this would never have come to Calistoga. So thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for the recognition. I also helped bring this same program to the Uba City Unified School District as the fire chief over in Sutter County. So it's something that—if your family, as mine has—has been affected by drunk drivers. It wasn't a teenage drunk driver. It was an adult that killed my father-in-law practically in front of the house. So it's one of those things that we in the Kraus family take very seriously. So I'm proud of how the program has evolved over the years, and I'm sure it'll do nothing but get better, and certainly has my continuing support. I'm sure Jim's—Jim has worked very hard on it for a number of years. David Moon Wainwright has been very instrumental in this program as well. And we almost didn't get it here because the school district wasn't sure. They wanted to have a program that vivid with their students. So the school board at the time was really the deciding factor because we couldn't have done it without the school's cooperation. So, thank you.
Thank you all very much. All right, are we doing the Recreation Department? Do—I can't see—oh, there you are. I can't see anything behind this lectern from there. So tonight, we also have a presentation from Calistoga Recreation Department. Welcome back.
Well, thank you. My name's Rachel Melick. I'm the Recreation Manager. I'm just going to give a little update on where we're at, what we're doing, all that good stuff. So, here we go. This spring, we piloted a girls' youth volleyball program, which has been really exciting. We typically have lower numbers in girls' programs. This one was—kids were really excited about it, interested, so it was fun to start. I think it's going to grow into something big, so that's great. We had 20 participants this time around. We gave out 13 scholarships. That's kind of indicative of all of our programs, that number of scholarships that we give out per program. So that's—that's great. And this has also allowed us to kind of piggyback into a summer collaborative program with the Boys and Girls Clubs. We'll be doing volleyball there this summer, which is awesome. Youth swimming. Again, this year, we did the CES swim lessons, where the second through sixth graders come down to the pool. They take a week of 30-minute lessons per day. It's with our instructors and some volunteers. This is kind of paid for by the CCPP. I think everybody's familiar with that, so that's a great program. We saw about 170 kids. That's wrapping up this week. It's always really fun, and it's exciting to hear the volunteers say, "Oh, this is the most rewarding volunteering I've done." So if you're interested in that for next year, come on, join us. Again, we're doing our Wave Swim Team. That's another partnership we do with a local swim team, and it just allows us to offer a higher-level program, which is great. And then we also have Junior Lifeguards. And with Junior Lifeguards, this is an excellent program because it gets kids excited about lifeguarding and kind of plants the seed really early, like, "Oh, this is really fun. I want to be a lifeguard when I'm 15 and old enough." So we're just kind of building our base from the swim lessons to the swim team, junior lifeguards, and then they become a lifeguard, so eliminating any problems for finding staff in the future. And then we also have special events. We had our—I think it's our largest special event to date. It was called May the Fourth, and it was on May 4th, and it was around kind of the Star Wars theme, so that was a lot of fun. We had about—gosh, no, I don't remember the number. 155 people come for May the Fourth, so that was pretty good. Another thing I kind of want to highlight is staff development. I think this kind of gets overlooked in our department. We do a lot of outreach to teens and young adults in the community to get them hired, get them jobs—that's Iris Ortega's daughter, Jessie, in the picture. Get them jobs and teach them kind of valuable skills that they'll use for the rest of their lives. So it's a—it's a great kind of—I like to call it a program because it's bringing youth in, getting them jobs, getting them trained in skills that they wouldn't learn otherwise. So far, we've hired and trained 12 new kids and young adults, and then we're bringing on an additional eight in June with the lifeguard training class. So all good stuff. We hosted our first-ever volunteer appreciation night last Friday at the pool. We had about 40 family—40 volunteers and their families come. That was really fun. Did a barbecue, just showed our recognition. We would be lost without our volunteers. We would have nobody running programs, and the department would crumble. So there you go. And they got that cute bag that's in the corner. So if you're interested in volunteering, again, we always need more. And then finally, here's our summer schedule. Again, it's pretty robust. There's lots of swimming happening: lap swim, aqua aerobics, aqua yoga, aqua boot camp, swim lessons, swim teams, something for everyone. Again, we're collaborating with Calistoga Fit. They bring swim—or they bring water aerobics instructors for us, and they teach the classes, and people love them, so that's great. And then we'll also be having the Boys and Girls Club join us for the summer for swimming. And that's the end. That little girl saying, "The end." Unless you have any questions.
Is that a young Rachel?
That's—yes, in fact, that would be a young Rachel.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions?
Yeah, was that dog in a public park because it isn't on a leash?
I think it was. I think it was.
Okay.
No, that was the fairgrounds.
We'll let it slide this time.
That was the fairgrounds.
Yeah.
Oh, fairground. Oh, that's all right. It can run all over the place there.
Yeah, exactly.
Anyone in the public, any questions? Rachel, you and your team continue to do great work over there, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel.
I'll entertain a motion on the consent calendar as presented unless any items are requested to be pulled, and I will start myself with pulling item number 11. Are there any other consent calendar items that need to be addressed?
I think Iris and I need to have items six and seven pulled because of our proximity to this particular assessment district.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to move on items four through 15, but excluding six, seven, and 11.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barnes, a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. I'll entertain a motion to move on items number six and seven, with the understanding there'll be a recusal by Councilmember Lopez Ortega and Councilmember Kraus.
So moved.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barnes, a second by Vice Mayor Dunstford. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And two recusals. You have that? All right. Item number 11, City Manager Feek. I know I had a few requests to have this item pulled forward. This is item number 11, Consideration of a Resolution Authorizing a Water Exchange with Santa Clara Valley Water District for a portion of the city's 2018 State Water Project Water Allocation via the Napa County Flood Control and Water Conservation District. The recommended action this evening is to adopt the resolution as presented. City Manager Feek.
So the item—the item before City Council tonight, and certainly Derek and Mike are in the audience to speak in the event. Council has specific questions. Similar to agenda items like this in the past, the city has an allotment of NBA water that sometimes when there's a demand or a need from another agency which is requiring—which is requesting additional water, they can make a request. That request gets passed down to the county flood control and water conservation district, and then to the participating agencies like City of Calistoga. In this case, as you see in your staff report, the City of Calistoga has the opportunity to essentially sell a portion of our unused NBA water to a water district which is in need. In addition to selling this portion of water, the city requests that a return of 50 percent of that water allocation be returned back to the City of Calistoga within 10 years. So essentially, we're selling the unused water at this point in time, and we receive back 50 percent of that water over the next 10 years. The recommended action tonight is to approve this resolution. One comment—that was a question brought up by Councilmember Kraus, as well as other city council members—was, "How confident are we in our water availability? Will we have need of this water down the road?" Probably a second question, which is really more pertinent to items like our recent wastewater—water and wastewater rate study, is, "Did we account for this kind of anticipated revenue during the rate study?" And speaking with Mike Kern, we are of the opinion and recommendation that the city, like in years past, we have had adequate water, and we've had—we've been able to provide this water to a requesting agency and haven't had need of it. So we're 100 percent confident with this recommendation, which, if we sell back—I believe the exact number—is 400 acre-feet of unused or NBA water that we do not anticipate needing, that we would receive a one-time payment of approximately $78,000, which is $200 per acre-foot minus an administrative charge of $2,000, which brings us to $70,000. And then I think the—the answer of whether this was anticipated in our water wastewater rate study, it was not. It's a one-time revenue, which does not always present itself. It has in these—in these last couple of years, but we did not—we did not include this kind of one-time revenue in our recent rate study. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, and would invite any questions to Mike or Derek as well, should you so choose. Thanks.
I know one of the questions is going to be asked, "Well, why don't we just save that 400 acre-feet? Is this use-it-or-lose-it water? In other words, if we don't sell it to someone to use domestically, it basically runs into the ocean?
Mike, could I invite you up to the podium to speak? There's—the way that we have water residing within NBA water is somewhat complicated for me, and I prefer to—
No, I—I understand it's complicated, and I don't think that anyone here wants to hear the complete complicated answer, but basically, Mike, this is use-it-or-lose-it water?
That's correct.
You're right on the money tonight.
So we get one-time, every-year allocations. We don't use that. What we don't use, we can sell, or we lose it. It goes back into the pool, if you will.
It's not that simple, but you're close.
Okay.
So we get—we get an allocation based on what the state projects the watershed to be able to deliver. And right now, we're at 40 percent of our allocation. 100 percent would be 1,925 acre-feet. 40 percent is 770 acre-feet. So that's what we have right now that we're entitled to under Table A, water. We also have what's called carryover water, which is water that we didn't use from previous year's allocations that we've carried over. Basically, it's in a piggy bank. The formula that dictates how much you can carry over on any given year is very complicated. And this calendar year, or this water year, the most that we can carry over to next year is 51 acre-feet. So that means of the 770 acre-feet, we've used 20 of it so far. So that makes 750 that we have. If I carry over the maximum amount, which is 50 acre-feet, that means I have 700 acre-feet of water that I have to either use or lose. With our local water supply, we're projecting that we're only going to use about 300 acre-feet of that 700 acre-feet of water. If we don't market it or find a different home for it, it gets returned back to the state pool with no compensation to the city. So I would rather take a very, very small risk and 99 percent, you know, certain that we're not going to need that 400 acre-feet of water, and make a little bit of return on our investment.
When it says a return of 50 percent of the exchanged water within 10 years, they just give it back to us? We don't have to pay to get it back?
That's correct. That's correct. So that—that would be the interest, if you will.
Okay. And if we don't need it and we don't take it back at the end of 10 years, that agreement expires?
Correct.
So we could lose 200 acre-feet over the course of 10 years?
The in—the interest.
The interest, yeah. Okay, thank you.
And this is a one-time occurrence for this year only, so we're not forfeiting it for future years at this point?
That's correct. So this is—this will be the third time that we've done this. Once—this is the second time since I've been here in five years, and then there was one previously in 2002 or 2003.
I seem to recall that those were 200 and some thousand, 185,000 or something.
Yeah, I think the one in 2002—
So we've made about $400,000.
Yeah, the last one was for $100,000. It was 500 acre-feet. Put it in perspective, the City of Napa is going to exchange 6,000 acre-feet, and that windfall to them is 1.2 million.
So this is a common occurrence?
I would say it's not—
Not unheard of.
It's—it's not unheard of, but it's not common, because we have to balance the needs of the community, and then also, is there somebody that is actually willing to buy the water?
Any other questions?
One of the—going back to our rates study and the public hearings, we did talk about the possibility of doing rebates at some point in the future, and I know that we are working on our water and wastewater enterprise funds. This is money that we hadn't anticipated, so perhaps during our budget deliberations, we could consider rebating some of this found money, unless there's something else unforeseen that's come up, or—of course, Mike's got his hand up already, but—
So one of—the items that you just approved was an inundation study, updating our inundation study and emergency action plan. That's $80,000, which we had not anticipated, that expenditure. So between the two, it's a net sum zero.
Okay. But these—these funds, $80,000, could only be used for water—it— fund—enterprise fund-related endeavors?
It will endure to the water—the water fund. That's correct.
And we were required to do that inundation study—
By state law.
Correct. Okay. Any other questions, Mike? Yes, sir.
It was an unfunded mandate.
Unfunded—another unfunded mandate.
I love to use those words.
We just funded.
I don't.
Anyone else in council? Anyone in the public with questions on this? All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike.
All right, no else has any further discussion. I'll entertain a motion on this item as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Barnes. We have a second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
If I—if I might just say something, you just saw Mike and I exchange envelopes. I got his mail, he got my mail, and that's what that exchange of envelopes just was. No conspiracy.
I thought there was cash in here.
You mean, Calistoga didn't make some money tonight?
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Moving on, there are no public hearings this evening. We'll move on to General Government, item number 16 under K, Consideration of Accepting a Report Regarding Potential Initiation of a Municipal Code Amendment to Increase the Number of Cannabis Plants That Can Be Cultivated Outdoors. The recommended action this evening is to receive and accept the report. Taking us through this item will be Director Goldberg. Welcome back.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. A little over a year ago, as you'll recall, the City Council adopted certain regulations regarding the cultivation of cannabis for personal use at single-family residences. regarding the cultivation of cannabis for personal use at single-family residences. Among the regulations, the council decided to allow up to two of the six plants that are allowed per dwelling unit to be cultivated outdoors. However, plants must be enclosed by a solid fence of at least six feet in height, and may not be visible from a public right-of-way or neighboring property at the ground level. You also adopted regulations that they cannot cause odor problems, et cetera, in the neighborhood. We were reminded at the community forum regarding the potential for cannabis dispensaries last month, that we committed to revisiting the outdoor grow regulations after the last harvest, to see if the community had experienced any problems, and to possibly consider increasing the number of plants that could be cultivated outside for each dwelling unit. In consultation with police department, they did not log any complaints related to personal cannabis cultivation, either indoors or outdoors. And we unfortunately do not have information available about how many properties chose to cultivate outside, so we don't require a license or a special permit, so I can't share that with you, but I can share that the police department did not log any complaints regarding security issues or odor problems. So, we are bringing this back to you to see if the council is interested in increasing the number of plants of six that could be cultivated, if you wanted to increase it, by one or more plants. I noted in the staff report that the City of Napa just fairly recently allowed up to six plants outside for personal use. None of the other Napa County jurisdictions currently allow personal outdoor cultivation. We don't have a specific recommendation for you, though we're just bringing it to your attention, because we committed to do so. Many, there's a general sentiment of people who want to cultivate it for personal use, it's much easier to grow outside. You don't have to use all of the energy and the lights, and getting the moisture out of the air, et cetera, mold problems. You know, it's a lot easier to grow it outside, if you do it properly, under either condition. So, that was a consideration, and allowing two of them to be grown outside, and see how it went, and so we're reporting back to you. And if you feel like you want to make an amendment to that provision, you can direct staff to initiate an ordinance amendment. That would then go through the planning commission and come back to you.
Thank you. We were reminded, the city was reminded at, was it February or March, community forum?
April 18th.
April 18th, community forum, attended by City Manager Feek, Councilmember Barnes, myself, on the topic of dispensaries, that we would, we had agreed to revisit, so that's what we asked Lynn to file the report. So thank you very much. Councilmembers, any thoughts, feelings about giving staff direction on modifying the current ordinance to perhaps allow for a greater number of outdoor plants to be cultivated?
It seems to me that the only people in the community that have come forward are those that want us to increase it. I have heard no one say we should decrease it or keep it the same. There have been no police complaints. Talked to Mitch on several occasions over the years, over the year, and nothing of any, anything. No complaints. So, I had originally recommended, when we did this last year, that six be allowed outside, so I would remake my request that all six be allowed to be outside.
I supported the two plant recommendation, which was the recommendation of the planning commission at the time. And one of the things that I said was, is that if this 2017 harvest was uneventful, that I would certainly consider increasing the number of outdoor plants, and I stick with that. I would be in favor of raising the limit to the full six. The only question I would have would be, and I understand different strains of cannabis has different odor issues, perhaps, that if someone is growing six plants outside, and we do get a complaint, how would we handle that? Lynn, could you, would we require the plants to be removed, or how would that be handled if there were complaints because of a strain of cannabis that's particularly... Yes?
I actually don't know, because we haven't run into the problem. Assuming they were in containers, we could require that they be moved inside, but that's not going to be very feasible, based on the size. They could be destroyed, et cetera. I mean, I think we'd have to look at it on a case-by-case basis. Not having cultivated cannabis myself, I'm not completely familiar with how long the odor would continue, so that's another consideration. If it's only going to be another week, maybe something could be worked out. We would really have to look at it on a case-by-case basis, just like we do with barking dogs or any other code violation.
I know we have one proponent here. How long, I'm guessing that the odor issues come late in the life cycle of the plant, and...
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All righty, that really hasn't changed my opinion. I'd be supportive of going to six plants.
And it would fall under the already established code enforcement process, so warning, penalty, penalty, mitigation, and mitigation, I would assume, yeah, could include the removal of.
And if we got a rash of complaints, we could always go back to two.
Absolutely.
That's true.
So, direction-wise, have staff come back with a recommendation to increase this number for consideration at a public hearing?
I'd be in favor of that.
Is that enough?
Well, I'm comfortable with where it is, so...
Okay.
It's just my personal feeling.
Me too, I'm comfortable the way it is right now, so...
Okay, so you've, I would be supportive of re-reviewing this ordinance to increase the number. So if you could bring back for public hearing, up to six plants, outdoor cultivation?
Which is the state maximum, correct?
State maximum.
Personal outdoor cultivation.
Okay, so the direction is to come back with six outdoors?
Correct.
Okay, so you don't want the planning commission to necessarily...
And it could, it could be like, go to three, go to four, go to five.
Well, that's the other consideration, is to split the...
You know, how many, exactly?
Somewhere between two and six.
Okay, but again, you don't necessarily need the planning commission to explore all the various combinations.
That's how we went through it last time, correct?
Yeah.
Please, Dylan.
One, one comment. The thing that really, and we mentioned this at the, at the community forum last month, was one of the comments that we had heard from one of the agencies which did have an outdoor allotment of up to two plants, was that they saw fewer code enforcement complaints when there were two outside. And so I think it's just, it's interesting that, again, we haven't had any complaints. So really, the reason, the logic behind it, Yountville, town of Yountville, was considering up to two plants outside. You had this little bit of feedback from one community, which had the up to two plants outside restriction, that's kind of the direction we gave, is let's just try to come back here from now. Typically with everything, you know, we go to planning commission, we run a by, we run a proposal by them, and then it comes back to city council. And so I think really what Lynn's trying to get is, we want to give them direction of consider up to six. I think that's what they would consider. So I think the publications, the notices, the people attending the meeting, that would be the, what's on the agenda, is they're considering up to six plants allowed outside.
Well, I don't understand why it goes to planning commission and not just come back here.
Because it's an ordinance amendment, we typically run our ordinance amendments to the planning commission first. It's a zoning-related issue, goes to planning commission, and then it comes to city council.
It's a specific chapter under zoning code.
Okay. Councilmembers, you're comfortable with that, running it through planning?
Sure.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I would just add that Lynn, Lynn, as she always does, she does a very good job. She'll make sure and document all the comments, and so you'll be able to hear all the public feedback and comments. Once we start advertising and talking about it, there'll be a lot of people sharing thoughts. We'll make sure council gets that full bundle before you make your decision.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Lynn. All right, moving on to item number 17, consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to make a payment to CAL-PERS, California Public Employees Retirement System, to be applied to the unfunded side fund, unfunded side fund liability, and to approve a budget adjustment from the unappropriated fund balance of the Employee Future Benefits Fund in an amount not to exceed $1 million. Recommended action, adopt the resolution. Taking us through this item will be City Manager Feek.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, as we discussed last Thursday, although it wasn't televised, we had a budget workshop at the fire station. We talked about various goals and priorities of the city council. The agenda item in front of you here tonight is similar to one that we approved, that you approved in June of, in May of 2017. As we're all aware, but for those listening in the public, the city council has consciously set aside money each year to fund forthcoming unfunded pension liabilities. As we all know, statewide, local governments are dealing with the challenges associated to these unfunded pension obligations. As we've been setting money aside, we've now to the point where our general fund reserves are healthy, we anticipate healthy enterprise fund reserves, that we can take these monies that we've been setting aside and actually start paying our unfunded pension liabilities. The item in front of you tonight represents a one-time payment to CAL-PERS in the amount of $1 million. We're essentially taking this year's set aside, which is half a million dollars, and the set aside we will make in this next fiscal year, which starts July 1, we're making that one-time payment right now. The reason we would make that payment right now is because anything posted to CAL-PERS before the end of the month of May, means that they can take that one-time payment and apply it towards forthcoming rates. And we'll see a rate decrease on how, what the city's costs will be moving forward. This one-time, $1 million payment would represent about a $98,000 per year annual savings over the next 30 years. So it's essentially making a million-dollar payment now, and saving $3 million over the next 30 years. Between last year's payment of 1.8, and this year's payment of 1 million, it represents a significant portion, more than half of that unfunded side fund payment that we need to make. I showed this chart, and I don't have a copy here now, but it was part of our presentation slides last Thursday, but there are copies in the back. It shows a bar chart of our pension obligations, the percentages that we have to make. And you can see this gradual incline over the last 10 years, but then a steep incline starting in fiscal year 2017, which then immediately started dropping. And that drop is because of the 1.8 million dollar one-time payment. We expect another drop, and to see that trend line going down, as the city continues funding these unfunded liabilities. I'm very hopeful that we're unique in the state, where we're actually making significant payments, with an ability to pay for our pension obligations, in addition to funding other priorities like roads, workforce, housing opportunities, so on and so forth. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I certainly express my appreciation to councilmembers Kraus and Barnes for helping and walking, you know, asking questions, and helping meet with us, to talk with PERS staff, and talk about a strategy associated with this. But the recommended action tonight is to authorize the city manager to make this one-time payment, and also to approve the budget adjustment, which just allows for that $1 million to happen now. We will not budget a half a million dollars in this next fiscal year to do so. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, City Manager Feek. Councilmembers, any questions? I know we discussed this previously, we've exercised this action before, so... It's not a public hearing, but anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? Not seeing any. I'll close public comment, and entertain a motion as presented.
May I make one comment?
Please.
I don't know if the people at home can see this or not. I'll hold it up, and I don't know if the camera can, can catch that, but you see at the end of the graph, it was going up dramatically, and right here, when we made the payment, it's starting to go down. And as Dylan said, it will go down even further. So, this is money well spent. It's like paying off your high-priced credit cards before you pay off anything else.
Thank you very much.
Well done, Jim.
Yeah. And we'll also put, we'll also make sure that this graph is available online.
We're also gonna make sure Kim has a copy, as well as Ann.
All right. With that said, I will entertain a motion as presented.
So moved. Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Kraus, and a second by Councilmember Barnes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Carries unanimously. And I will echo City Manager Feek's appreciation to Councilmember Kraus and Councilmember Barnes continuing to steer us well as the finance subcommittee, so thank you very much, gentlemen. Item number 18, consideration of a resolution authorizing the city manager to accept amendment number one to the Joint Powers Agreement, JPA, regarding the use and equitable distribution of flood protection sales tax revenues. The recommended action is to adopt the resolution as presented. Dylan, this one also sounds riveting.
Very riveting. I'll be very brief. As you all know, we collect, countywide, there's a measure A, which provides sales tax revenue to cities. At the time that measure A was adopted, cities enter into a joint powers agreement to participate, and to make sure that there is equitable distribution of these sales tax funds. What we're doing now is we are anticipating the sunset of measure A, which is June 30 of 2018 this year, and the start of measure T. We're specifically writing out how you wind down all the accounting, and make sure that the funds collected up until June 30, 2018, which even happen to be funds that we will collect and receive after that date, are still spent according to measure A, and spent according to the law and the measure as it was adopted by voters here in Napa County. So I'd really direct your attention to page two in the staff report, and looking at line 24, you can really see the specifics about the term of the JPA, and here's what the several uses were. And essentially, the staff report, looking at line 31, "The county of Napa desires to establish procedures in manner for distribution of additional revenues beyond those need to satisfy the original uses identified in the JPA and the measure." When you look at the supporting staff materials, you'll see the exact language that we're recommending. This has actually been prepared by the county auditor controller, Tracy Schulze. She is recommending approval by all of the different city agencies. She's even allowed us to provide for comment. We spent a lot of time talking internally, Gloria, Mike, to make sure that we're accounting for this appropriately. We just want to make sure that there's a proper accounting of these taxpayer funds. The resolution tonight is to approve these modifications to the JPA, so that we can start and finish the wind down of measure A. Thank you.
Councilmembers, any questions on this?
Yeah, I just have one. We have, the city has received $8,995,000 so far, and we have spent $7,405,000, which leaves a total of $1,590, call it a million six. That's for 19 years. So we have one more year of revenue to come in, which is 18, the year 17, 18, which will be posted at the end of next month. Assuming it's about where it has been, that will be another million or so. I'm assuming that that money has already been allocated through the upcoming budget for projects that would fit under measure A, and then we do the final accounting. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other council members?
I would like to make one more comment. I would like to thank our representative of the Calistoga...
That's where I was gonna go.
Go for it.
We are, the, for the last few years, the city has been well represented by resident of Calistoga, Mr. Brian McBride, who sits through these meetings, which are, what are they, quarterly?
Yeah.
Yeah, quarterly, and has represented us quite well, and he follows those meetings with reports to myself and to the city manager. So thank you, Mr. McBride, for your service to the community. And we are looking for a citizen representative for the measure T program when that starts, so with that said...
And again, thank you, Brian. He took my place on that board. I sat through five years of it before he did. So, thank you, Brian.
It's a good character builder. Anyone in the public wishing to address this matter? We'll close public comment, and bring it back to the council, and entertain the motion as presented. Barnes, I think you should, you should...
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Barnes, second by Councilmember Kraus. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item number 19, the last one, discussion and consideration to increase the City of Calistoga transient occupancy tax by 1 percent for housing that is affordable. The recommended action is to provide direction to staff, and to direct an ad hoc housing committee to participate on countywide two-by-two meetings on the same subject. Taking us through this will be City Manager Feek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council, before you tonight, and as part of your staff report, if you remember, well, essentially, let me give a little history. Starting in 2014, the council adopted goal... Starting in 2014, the council adopted goals and objectives as your city council goal document that began reflecting the need for housing that's affordable. We've done a lot of things since then. We've certainly identified partnerships and programs to provide funding for housing, home loans, community development block grant funds. We provide funding to groups like Calistoga Affordable Housing and partner with projects like Calistoga Vista, you know, how can we work with them to build workforce housing, Corporation for Better Housing on Washington Street, also on Lower Washington. So, we've taken quite considerable efforts to do what I call housing projects and meet our needs. Since my employment started here in Calistoga in early 2016, we've also taken the initiative to look at amending our rules and regulations, modifying ordinances, which really did a couple of things. One, promoted the kind of housing we want to see. We look at, you know, what are parking restrictions? How do we promote accessory dwelling units? And promote development inside the corporate limits of the city, not, you know, preventing sprawl, but also looking at green development. How do we promote better use of water, wastewater resources? And essentially trying to remove some of the obstacles and barriers that we were hearing from constituents who are trying to build housing in Calistoga. One of the kind of remaining items has been funding, identifying a proper funding source for housing that's affordable. Specifically, there are, there are attempts that we've made to try and identify, you know, I'll call it one-time revenue, so an affordable housing impact fee tied to a single-family home. If you remember, last year, we adopted the fee at $12,000, and at the same time felt that maybe that would, you know, undermine the efforts we're trying to make to build new housing by placing more costs on someone trying to build a single-family home. At that same time, at that same council meeting, council directed staff to consider alternative funding sources for housing that's affordable. We really looked at a lot of options. We spoke to a lot of different agencies, a lot of people, to try and find one that was beneficial to Calistoga, which would provide a dedicated and committed funding source for housing that's affordable and help us meet priorities in a way that's been different than we've had before, which is a reliable, sustainable mechanism. What you have here tonight is a, we're asking for council to have a discussion, provide direction on an item to increase the transit occupancy tax amount, which is currently 12% to 13%. If council decides to increase the transit occupancy tax rate 1%, you would place the proposed increase on the November ballot as a special revenue tax. A special revenue tax is different than a general tax where you're essentially adopting a revenue statement. You're saying this is what the tax has to be used for. We would do that at a later meeting, and when you, when you do that, you essentially set a higher threshold for yourself, which is a two-thirds majority is required for approval. We do have some timelines we would need to work through. Essentially, a ballot measure like this is proposed by the city would have to be submitted to the county no less than 88 days prior to the election. So, we have some timelines we're kind of working our way into, but, you know, those are all discussion items that we can have over the summer. Prior to placing the proposal on the ballot, council is required to adopt a resolution and an ordinance, which includes a description, as I mentioned. The funds could be allocated to affordable housing programs and services, including, but without limitation, land acquisition, land donation, building acquisition, building rehabilitation, housing construction, maintaining existing supply of mobile homes, of single-family homes, of multi-family homes, providing housing subsidies to lower-income residents, providing financing to developers, or preserving existing subsidies for developments facing conversion to market rates. This could be rental, it could be owner-occupied, it could be however you decide to adopt your statement for the measure. Currently, there are countywide discussions on this. I think we all know it's a countywide issue, and so we have been talking about it for far longer than many of our other county counterparts, the other cities and the county have been. But there's, there's discussion now about, should this be a countywide activity to fund the need that exists countywide? The item tonight, I'm asking city council to provide direction, guidance. Should we consider this? Should we prepare the resolution, the ordinance, and the statement? And more importantly, if it's worthwhile, recommend that the city designate two representatives from the city council to participate in the countywide discussion about increasing the TOT rate in each jurisdiction to fund affordable housing, or as we like to call it, housing that's affordable. Recommended action tonight, obviously, is to provide direction and guidance, and should you so choose, designate two people to participate in the two-by-two. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. One thing I do want to mention, which I failed to mention, is when we look at the fiscal impact of this item, our current year's budget is approximately $6.1 million for hotel tax collections, which represents 12% of general, which represents 12%, which is, goes directly into the general fund. A 1% increase is estimated to be $512,325 annually under our current hotel tax collection assumptions. Thank you.
And for further background on this, the city of Calistoga, as Dylan had referenced, had started making this suggestion countywide quite some time ago, and now we're in a situation or a position where all the county, all the municipalities and the county are, would like to do this in synergy with one another. Each municipality and the county have to adopt this separately, but we're, it's been our intention and certainly my desire to see the county, the city of Calistoga continue to be somewhat called assertive, somewhat called aggressive, in the many changes, as Dylan has referenced, that we've made over the last couple of years to accommodate housing that's affordable. I wish our folks who spoke during oral communication were here to see that what we have been doing over the last few years, but maybe that can be reminded to them somehow. The lodging industry in Calistoga, which would be the, the, the folks responsible for imparting this, this fee upon their, their guests have, Calistoga-based lodging properties have and are supportive of this, which is very important, because in general, TOT increases are not welcomed by that industry, but in this particular case, because it would be a special tax addressing the significant housing issue that we have throughout the county, they have demonstrated support for this moving forward.
I would be reading the staff report. I'm supportive of this up to a point, and the point where I get very concerned is, is this money going to stay in Calistoga, or is this like the Measure T where we don't get all of the money that we produce? Some of it goes to the county. The T bid thing is another thing that upsets me, that we get a small percentage of what we pay in, and the rest goes to other folks. And as long as this is a return to source, so that we're sure that we're taking care of our folks and not taking care of folks in some other community that, that isn't going to be raising this much money, then I'm, I'm in support of it.
City Manager Feek, this is a return to source revenue stream, correct?
Correct, as presented it is, yes.
100%.
And this would be a two-thirds majority of the electorate, correct?
Yes, correct. One, one comment I'd add, if you're all not aware, there is ballot language being passed around right now for a statewide initiative referred to as the Tax Fairness, Transparency, and Accountability Act of 2018. That act has, essentially what it does is it increases the approval threshold to two-thirds for everything in the future moving forward. So, I think the fact that we were planning on a special tax, or I'm sorry, I said two-thirds, a two-thirds majority voter-wide, this, this would be a two-thirds majority initiative. One of the additional requirements of this new act is that in order for something to be placed on the ballot, it require a four-fifths majority of the governing body's approval. We don't, we're, we're not required to have that now, but I think depending on what happens at the state level and this voter initiative, should that pass, which would include all measures adopted in 2018, I think it would be wise to work through the details of this to get four-fifths approval before we place it on the ballot, just to be sure that we approve something, and then later on, if something statewide passes, doesn't negate our action. I can share more information about that in time, but two-thirds majority approval, it would be a local, it would be money that stays here in Calistoga, return to source.
Anyone else? And just a reminder for the folks at home and some people in the audience, transient occupancy tax, TOT, is paid, is assessed on hotel rooms, paid by guests, never paid by residents.
Unless they're a guest.
Unless they're, that's true, unless they're a guest, but this is not a tax on the residents of the municipality in which you adopt the TOT.
Mr. Mayor, in your day job, you are the executive director of the Chamber of Commerce and therefore intimately involved with the whys and the wherefore's of TOT. In your estimation, not to put you on the spot, but I will a little bit, will this impact the tourist trade in this town? Are we killing the goose that laid the golden egg by increasing the tax?
If we were, if our hotel situation was driven highly by group sales, it's risky because that can sway decisions made. You know, hundreds of rooms sold to one company did all adds up. We are primarily, and by primarily, almost 95% of our hotel occupancy is leisure travel, and there are leisure travel guests that come to Calistoga. When you look at other places they visit or where they come from, we are not putting ourselves at a competitive disadvantage.
So, if a guest is renting a room for $300, this increase is $3?
Is $3, correct.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I wanted to hear the professional opinion.
It's $1, it's an additional dollar per every $100 spent.
I would say it's very rare that I've ever had a guest comment...
Oh, that's right, you have rooms too, don't you?
Yeah, on the room tax. I think when you go to San Francisco or other big cities, New York, I don't know what it is, but it's significantly higher than 14%. I mean, I, I think San Francisco could be...
18 to 21, depending on the neighborhood you're in.
18 to 21.
Wow.
Yeah.
Good, thank you.
Anyone in the public want to address this matter? Yes, please. If, go to the podium for us, and if you so choose, share with us your name and your address. Otherwise, you're not required to do so.
I am Sean Williams, and I live on Emerald Drive. I'm new to the issue of the new resorts, and somebody said to me that they are exempt from paying TOT. Is that true?
Not at all.
Thank you. I needed that.
Some would suggest that's one of the main reasons we allowed them, yeah. Nobody is exempt from TOT. There are communities that have done TOT rebates or holdouts to encourage new development. This city has never had to do that, and it's not even a point of discussion that we're willing to enter into. So, yes, they fully pay their fair share, as well as their fair share of property tax.
So, you should question whoever told you that, where, so we nip that rumor before it festers into fact in some people's mind.
And ask that person to call any one of us up here. We will tell them.
Anyone else? All right, we'll close public comment, bring it back. And then in terms of the ad hoc, I should say, the two representatives to be on the two-by-two would be my recommendation that it be the two council members that are on the ad hoc housing committee over the last two years, assuming that the vice mayor is amenable to that. That would be myself and the vice mayor.
Fine with me.
Fine with me, too.
All right.
Even if he doesn't want to.
He's got some skin in the game.
All right. Is that the direction you need?
I think that's great. One clarification, it seems like it would make good sense, would, would one of the items that that ad hoc committee do help assist with reviewing the language? So, the city attorney will ask to draft the language, but in part of that, we'll want to make, you know, we'll want to be very clear so that when voters are approving it, that they know exactly what it is they're approving. And so I'll ask the ad hoc subcommittee to review that language, too.
Part of the, the request to participate in the countywide two-by-two is to take advantage of synergy and everyone having language that's very similar, and I believe the county should have solicited you for any language you've already developed to this point. If not, Molly Ratigan, if you can send it to her as in tomorrow morning, that would be great, because what we want to prevent is every municipality in the county reinventing the same language and everybody paying legal fees, et cetera. There could be some, some benefits to sharing in that responsibility. We all still have to do our own ballot measure because of the fact that it's the individual municipalities. All right, with that said, I will adjourn to our next regularly scheduled meeting, which is Tuesday, June 5 at 6:00 p.m. Thank you, and have a nice evening.